Okay, I would like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting on Thursday, July 13th, 2023 at 7:02 PM. We, before we officially begin our meeting or get into the agenda, I would like to have a moment of silence for Mrs. Joyce Ethier, who was a business teacher here at the high school, and she passed away on July 4th. So, a moment of silence for Mrs. Ethier. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. And next on the agenda is Approval of Agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Rogowski?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vogel? Oh, Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. We, so Item A, Approval of Minutes from the Regular Meeting, 622, 2023. We are not including Item B, Approval of Minutes from Executive Session 622, 2023. That will go into our next meeting. But Item C, Enrollment Reports, 71, 2023. Item D, School Police Reports, 61, 2023. Item E, School Bus Inspection Reports, 71, 2023. Item F, Residency Tourency Report, 71, 2023. So I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items A, C, D, E, F. Motion by Mrs. Rogowski?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion by Mr. Fiorella.
I would just like, looking at the enrollment numbers, we see that, I believe, 3rd grade at BF Norton's already at 27 per the two classes. I know that we will wait a little longer before determining if we want to open up another classroom. What I would like to know, though, is can we have a report next time in either, probably the first August meeting, of any students that are not able to go to their home school and being sent to a different school because of filled classes?
We can.
Thank you.
And also, on that note, just, I know, in just what I'm thinking of right now, my memory, in terms of where we are right now, we have, as you know with enrollment, moved the seniors off the rolls, if you will, and now we're adding in the students that are coming online. As you recall, last month, we added three jobs at Ashton, a K, a 1, and a 3, I believe. That K's already at 22 at Ashton, so that we're filling up. But we have, right now, I want to say 19 K openings district-wide. Grade 1, around the same. Grade 2 is the tightest, only have 10 openings in Grade 2 district-wide. Grades 3, 4, and 5, we have more openings, anywhere from 35 to 40 district-wide. So if we space fill? But yes, our next meeting gets you that information.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next on the agenda is Personnel Announcements. Mrs. Dreisik.
Hi. Tonight, we have five resignations. Sarah Jenkins, Grade 3 at Community. Kalina Norberg, Special Education at Cumberland Hill. Nellie Norman, our Early Childhood Coordinator. Cheryl Reedy, Social Worker from McCourt and North Cumberland Middle School. And San Giovanni Vinicar, our Grade 7, 8 at North Cumberland Middle School. We have a leave of absence for the 2023-24 school year. Stephanie Sadler, Grade 6, Social Studies at McCourt. Amy Ruhan, MLL Teacher at Ashton. Danielle Lipitzer, Math Essentials at McCourt. And taking a one-year leave of absence to take on a new role at Cumberland School Department is Alicia Di Stefani, who is stepping down from her Special Education Coordinator role to take on the Director of Special Education role in the Cumberland School Department. So, welcome, Alicia.
Yep, Mr. Collins?
If I may, I do have a question, but first of all, welcome aboard, I'm sure, thank you. It is unique to see somebody move positions in the district and see a leave of absence and an appointment. Can you explain why that is? I've never seen this before. Usually, if somebody moves up in a position as she has, it usually just shows an appointment or, and you don't, is there a rationale behind a leave of absence and an appointment for the same person?
So it is part of the contract that they can take a leave of absence, and in the state of Rhode Island, you can take actually up to a three-year leave of absence when you go from a teacher role to an administration role. So in speaking with Alicia, she did ask for the one-year leave of absence in taking this role, and so, speaking with the leadership team, we agreed on a one-year leave of absence for her to take this role.
Okay, thank you. Great. Thank you. Next on the agenda is, oh, Report Out of Executive Session Meeting. On 7/13/2023, Report Out of Executive Session Votes, we did not have any votes, and so I need a motion to seal the minutes. Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Mrs. Vogel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes six to zero, right? Can we include seven? Okay, next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Thornton.
Good evening. Mike, first slide, please. Good evening, Madam Chair. First, I have the pleasure to announce one retirement. Cynthia Ferreira is here tonight, 26 years, payroll clerk, business office. Cynthia, please come on up. And as she comes up, we also have the pleasure of a special guest tonight, Alex Prignano, to come up and say a few words about Cynthia. So, Mr. Prignano, if you could please also come on up. Because Prignano retired last month, but he's, he's back again.
A few things I'd like to say about Cindy. Is this on, Mike? Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Cindy, I want to first thank you for giving me an excuse to attend tonight's School Committee meeting. My Thursday night would have been empty without having the chance to be here with my former colleagues, you know, to hear who's coming, who's leaving, and of course, to see Dr. Phil's construction photos. This is a community roof. Here's a sidewalk at Ashton. Here's a new window at Garvin, et cetera, et cetera. Phil, is it me or are a lot of these photos the same each week? Anyhow, since I'm here tonight, I'd like to take a few seconds to tell others who don't know you like I do, a little about Cindy Ferreira. Cindy came to the business office some years ago. I can't remember the exact year, but I do recall at the time, her union wasn't supporting, was supporting another candidate and accused my office of giving Cindy the answers to a test she took for the position. However, I quickly dismissed that claim when I found out that many of the Excel questions asked, most of us in the office, in the office couldn't answer anyhow, so I don't think anyone gave her the answers. Anyhow, Cindy is one of the five ladies in my former office, now Tim's office, minus a bathroom, I understand, that few people really know. The ladies, the, the, these ladies, recently retired, Janine Rue, Joyce Bonner, Kathy Scanlon, a part-time payroll person, Marcia, and of course, Cindy. They're like a football, they're like football officials or baseball umpires. You see, only umpires that blow calls and misplay, fans notice or remember. The good officials are invisible during the game, and that's how these women are extremely thorough and knowledgeable in their jobs. Not to over, not to overindulge the duties of the Accounts Payable position, but this position deals with all the vendors, make sure W9s are up to date, invoices are received and copies accurate, and 1099s issued to those compensated through Accounts Payable are just some of the duties that Cindy deals with on a daily basis. And with proper training, even I could do these tasks. But what makes Cindy special in the job is her work ethic and follow-through. These are qualities a person either has or doesn't have. It's either learned, it's not learned or taught, it's either in the person's DNA or not, and I was lucky, I was lucky these qualities were part of Cindy's makeup. In closing, Cindy, you are a fantastic employee that most people who are the decision-makers in the, in the district either hardly knew or don't know, and I was very lucky to have you working with me. Best of luck and health in your retirement. I'll miss seeing you every day, hearing how Joe is every morning, what your grandsons, what your grandsons are up to. And though I never worked at MetLife, it's a personal joke between us, I hope you enjoyed working with me half as much as I enjoyed working with you.
Did you award her the badge?
Oh, there you go.
Okay, and now on to Mr. Prignano's favorite part of the night. Mr. Prignano, you can stick around for the construction photos, Mr. Prignano. All right, so, Mike, hit it. So, um, actually, this is a brand-new picture, for the record. Tomorrow, is this actually Garvin? Garvin, they are grading the parking area. Tomorrow, you get the first layer of the, the parking lot at Garvin for the first half. That's exciting. Also, we're meeting the mayor tomorrow at 1:30 with his team, looking potentially, trying to stage some more cars off the road, if you will, onto the Garvin campus, so we're doing that tomorrow at 1:30, Mike. Sidewalks are going in all through Garvin, that's the front door with a new sidewalk. The bathrooms, doesn't look like much, but that was an antiquated bathroom, now it's all completely new, that's just the countertop going in with the appliances to follow. This is the new addition, the ductwork is going in as we speak, and the entire new addition, that's happening as we speak this week. This is the new entrance to the new part of the building. This is the new part of the building, that's the old building, that's the new entrance going into the new section of Garvin Elementary. This is the second floor. Once again, doesn't look, look like much, but if you saw it over the last six months, it's a big deal. The floor is brand-new, not covered up, the walls are painted, ceiling is going to be flooded any time. The windows are in, all being turned over to Will's team, probably within about a week, week and a half upstairs. Next slide. This is exciting. This used to be the main entrance to Garvin back in, say, 1920. This went down, right, chair rail, go down and out, and we had a nice, nice window there. It was all cemented up, so we cut it open, and the window's being installed now as we speak, so that, that's happening. That's exciting. The floor, this was the library in Garvin, it's now in two sections, it's two classroom spaces, this is the first space, floor's brand-new, windows new, and that's the office in the back. That's a whole different look for the library space at Garvin. This is Ashton going in, we now have the security vestibule in here, the, the mantrap, if you will, that's been put in place. Next slide. The ceilings have been flooded over at Ashton, so that's, that's all getting done. Next, the whiteboards are going up at Ashton, and just the doors connecting all the classrooms, the new addition, all those were put in place. The sinks are in, the cabinets are in, the cubbies are in, so that's all, all in place. And once again, ceilings put in place, that's a good look at the room. The last thing here is just the floor, and that room is done, so that's on pace. The heating elements are all going in at Ashton, that's all going in place. So Ashton really is looking good. Community, a lot changed since the kids left. We changed the fence line, and now a lot of work happening outside, all the sidewalk work around the playground, and this is how the kids used to walk in, all that's being redone. Once again, looping around, you can see the new section, the new cafeteria, and once again, the new sidewalk going in around the playground area. The rooftop units are all put in place at Community, that's all, all completed. This is inside, this is the kitchen, looking in, the floor's in, the walls are in, just now the appliances have to go in, ceiling's flooded. The stage at Community, today, this is on Tuesday, it's polyed now, Mr. Fiorella saw it today, it's polyurethane, looking really sharp, now just the final paint and the curtains at the Community stage. And the lighting, once again, just a nice look, the lighting with the windows, that's how it looks over at Community, looking outside, in the front. This, we punched the hole into the existing building. Where I'm standing is the addition, they punched the hole through, and now we connect to the old buildings, that happened, and now we're working on a few classrooms there. And that's the curve of the sidewalk, and a note here, you can see, we are encroaching upon the old playground here, right, as you can see, and as you know, the swings here are not in play right now. The new design will incorporate all the elements, just will push the swings in. So for next fall, though, you have a sidewalk here, and the swings will not be in play until the new playground goes, goes online. So, that's something that we're looking at right now. And those are the pictures. Once again, this time of year, it's really just now a lot of attention to detail. Today's meeting started at 10:30 on construction, we went pretty much all day, a lot of decisions made. Mark was there with me today, looking at, at Community, hit some items, so it's, you know, it is all coming together, it's just a question now of lead times and making sure everything comes in. So, happy to answer any questions on any of the buildings. Also, one last point on BF Norton, we're actually, we have a meeting next Tuesday with RIDE at the architect's office to finalize our plans with RIDE on, on that process with BF as well. So, happy to answer any questions.
Just two. So Garvin's still on track, looking good, on time?
Main building on track, on time, addition still is late, probably, I'd say, three weeks for the, for the addition, but same thing as Cumberland Hill, we do the same lunch protocol for those three weeks, but the main building's looking good.
And the Community Playground, I know they just passed the, at the Town Council, they just approved money for that. What is happening in the fall with that playground space?
The, the repairs that we made to the current playground will be in place, it will be open minus the swings. There's also a new fence, this fence was temporary, the new fence going in is a permanent fence, it's more ornate, and it's five feet high, a little higher, that'll be in place. The only thing you won't see is the swings, but everything else will be functional over here.
Great, thank you.
And I believe there's a 30-week lead time on the equipment for the new playground, so that's the trick of it, you order it in 30 weeks, we'll get that probably in the spring. Mr. Prignano, any questions on the construction?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Thornton.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Reports of Standing Committees, starting with the Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Fiscal Management Subcommittee met this evening. Just a couple of things. First of all, we do have 11 resolutions, actually, the first thing is we want to welcome Tim McGrath as the Budget Finance Director, so welcome aboard Tim and Steve Mulcahy, the new Controller, and as our former Finance Director leaves. So, so yeah, congratulations and welcome aboard to them. Mr. Prignano should hear that tonight's Fiscal Management Subcommittee went very smoothly, very efficient, right on schedule, nice succinct budget report. But we do have, we do have 11 resolutions, a couple amendments to the payment of the bills, and one resolution, but which we'll get to momentarily, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, and welcome again, Mr. McGrath. Policy and Procedure Subcommittee Update, Mr. Fiorella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did meet on Tuesday night, we had a pretty full docket. One of the big things that we did was a reorganization of the policy manual. Many policies that were scattered throughout the manual are now all listed under one category, that category being the new Health and Medical category, which is under the letter H, which is just really, just a little slice of heaven, because, you know, Health and Medical now under H. But all those policies are Health and Medical related, this was something that I've been trying to get done for the last couple of years, and here we are tonight doing it. There will be more changes to the manual coming up, but if you have any questions, we can discuss them later on in the meeting. None of these policies have been changed, they have only been moved. And what this also does is it eliminates some duplication of policies that were with, that were under the categories for students and for personnel, now they're streamlined into one policy, again, no changes have been made. Also, we discussed the transgender policy, it has been renamed gender, I'm sorry, it's now policy affecting students who identify as transgender or gender non-conforming. A lot of the changes were really about definitions with some new directives from the Rhode Island Inter-Scholastic League, which we can discuss also later. We also have the new Preschool Policy and Guidelines policy, which originally, our policy only really discussed finances, now it's a much more fleshed-out policy, we will discuss and vote on that later on on the agenda. And of course, we have the new H-13, the Administration of Medical Marijuana, which we will discuss. This is something that we are required to have by the state, so we did get that taken care of. The Policy Subcommittee took no action on it Tuesday night, only because we had some slight changes to make, and we figured we would just let the changes happen, and we would discuss them tonight. So, stay tuned.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorella. Next is the Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. A variety of people in Mr. DeBana's office have had vacation schedules over the last few weeks and upcoming, so we haven't been able to meet recently. Hopefully, we can meet in August. Next is the District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update, it does not meet in the summer. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is Public Hearing of Our Policies. I'll hand this over to you, Mr. Fiorella.
Yes, I would just ask that the following policies be read into the record. The first one is the new policy of H-13, Administration of Medical Marijuana. We also have the amended policies, J-23, which is now being called a, which is now categorized as a seven, policy affecting students who identify as transgender or gender non-conforming, and we have I-5, the Preschool Policy and Guidelines policy.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorella. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to comment on these policies, you may come up to the microphone. Seeing none, we move on to the next item on our agenda, which is General Comments from the Public. If there's anyone from the public who would like to comment? No? Okay. Next on the agenda is Old Business. Item A, Discussion and Revote and Accessibility of School Committee Meeting Packages for Public Viewing. So, we have talked about this the last couple of meetings, and at our last meeting, we agreed in concept that posting or making available any of the materials that we would be discussing at our meeting to the public by noon time of the meeting day would, would work for the Superintendent's Office, but we had a question from Mr. Collins last time about whether there was any violation of the Open Meetings Act in terms of making things available 48 hours ahead of time. We got our answer, that there is not, there is no violation of the Open Meetings Act, that you can post these, actually, whenever you want, these, these materials. So, I believe we have an agreed-to process, working with Dr. Thornton's assistant to get the materials updated and make available through the Google Drive. So, I would need a motion on this item. All right, thank you, Mrs. Feather. Motion by Mrs. Feather, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much, everyone. Next item is New Business. Item A, Discussion and Revote to Approve Revised 2023-2024 School Calendar. Changes include Professional Development Days and Right to Read Days. This is an important item, we want to make sure that the public and our families all understand, so, Dr. Thornton, could you take us through this?
Let me take you through it, and please stop me for any questions. This spring, RIDE, I would tell you, had a reinterpretation of the school calendars and how they should be conducted, so from that, we did get some direction, and we had to submit our plans to the state. The first piece, in a particular order, was the concept, we used to have, as you know, the early release Wednesdays, and the thinking when we did that, you know, years ago, was, for example, at the high school, we could be at 360 minutes, let's say, on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and at 300 minutes on the Wednesday, on average, we're still at the 330 minutes. And, you know, a lot of schools were doing that type of thing, but RIDE has said that that can't continue, you must have the minimum minutes every day, you can't even do the average. So, the early release Wednesday concept, which is very helpful to us, is something we can't keep doing, so that's, keep that in your mind and put that aside for a second, that's one piece. Another piece was, as you know, the state, state law around the right to read, the reading training for teachers, and districts are still working to finish that work. So, the state did allow this year and next year, if districts needed, up to three right to read days to finish that work. So, in this draft we're showing you, we did take the opportunity to use three right to read days. One is before the students arrive on August 31st, it wouldn't count, if you will, against the 180, but two of them, one on April 2nd, one on May 31st, would be teacher days, training days, but the students would not come in. What does that mean? The school year is next year, end of this calendar, a 178-day school year for children, not the normal 180, 178, because you have two right to read days during the year, and one right to read day before the kids get back, but we're taking advantage of all three, and that would finish our obligation for the state mandate around right to read. The last piece of the puzzle for the calendar is the idea of snow days. RIDE did say, if you add up all of your instructional minutes and you have more minutes than are required, you could, in theory, not tack on a snow day, if you will, in June and make up the snow day. Our calculation's at our lowest level, elementary, or tightest level, we have, I believe, 2,520 extra minutes, so we have the ability to forgive up to three snow days in this calendar. So normally, if we're home snowed in in December, we'd put it on in June, up to three times, we wouldn't do it in this calendar, so you'd still get out on June 18th, before Juneteenth, right? So, putting it all together in this calendar, what's different about it? Every day, it's the same bell schedule, there's no early release in this calendar. We still have a TBD on preschool, I have to give that to you on that exact time, but everything else, it's the same every day, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, same time. We have inserted the right to read PD days, that's different from the last calendar you saw, and you get out on the June 18th. The only wrinkle in this calendar, I would say, is graduation. If you look at it, once the seniors finish, four days for exams, time to mark up the exam, finish the exams, record the grades, you're looking potentially at a late graduation, probably June 20. So, school could end on June 18, and graduation's June 20. The only way to go earlier is if you wanted to reconsider February Vacation coming offline, I know that's never, never popular universally, but that's, that variable you could consider. After Labor Day's key for us because of construction, that's always what we need right now. So, yeah, that's kind of it, so it's right to read, it's the snow day piece, and it's the no early release Wednesdays. Those are the three big items, so happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Rogowski?
There is no way, so we're, we're adding in, the chat, sorry, the school year ends now a day later because we were at June 17th, and we've added in two additional days that parents are going to have to find childcare for their students, correct? Because they're now having these right to read days, along with Professional Development Days, they have a total of one, two, three, five days?
It's 178-day year versus a 180.
Right, so, but it's two days.
Big difference. Two more days, kids are home.
Kids are home, so two more days that parents have to.
But this year, after this year, would be done our obligation to right to read, and that wouldn't happen next year.
And there's no way to do that before school begins, not that I want to make teachers come back earlier, but, or to combine it with the currently scheduled Professional Development Days.
Right now, looking at it with Tony and, and the team, this was the best thinking we could come up with, given the schedule we had. We had one before the kids get back, we couldn't really get any more before, or that time.
I do, in observing this, I do think strategically, I don't know whether this was by design or not, but the April 2nd and the May 31st, you know, if there's a silver lining out of this, is that it creates three-day weekends for families who may want to go away or something like that. The other thing is, I, you know, does this increase your chance of becoming trigger-happy with canceling school because of snow days?
No, it would not.
Okay.
It would not.
Because the kids are watching, and I'm sure they want to know.
Mention one thing also, April 2nd is also an important indicator, the states change a few times, the latest guidance is April 2nd is the presidential primary, and they want schools closed that day, so that's a P, natural PD day. It's either a PD or a right to read. Oh, no, I'm sorry, it wasn't a Monday, I'm sorry. But they changed April 2nd, that's the current thinking for the state for the primary.
Okay.
Your last question, no, I would not want to cancel for snow.
Do we have the, I'm looking at the calendar right now, but we do not have, because we have a congressional primary, that's not accounted for? Congressional, we have that, the special election, and we have an election, there'll be the full election, I think, November 9th? No, I'm sorry, it must be November 7th. So those days are not accounted for, for election. How many of the schools, how many schools use precincts? Community school definitely is.
I'll have to check, I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, so we, I mean, I don't, depending on the turnout, though, but traditionally, we have, I might be encouraging you to cancel or change the days or something like that, but that is something we're going to have to account for, there is, there is going to be an election in September, I think it was September, could look at it, I think it's September 5th.
But I did turn the page when you said that.
But I did hear in the past when we've had these.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, sure.
I could be wrong, but I believe in the past that when we've had the elections that are off-cycle like this and a little different, the town has had different voting places that have been brought in. So, instead of being inside the schools, if I remember correctly, like one of them, they brought them into one of the church halls.
That's right.
Because they expect a lower turnout, and then also, it's, it's kind of a one-and-done type of thing versus a whole large one. So, it could be a possibility that we're not going to have to be concerned with closing schools because we could have the voting places to be elsewhere, and I, I believe that's something we should follow up with the mirror on.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent point. Actually, you can remember, I'm voting somewhere differently at one point a few years back. But I think that's, that's an excellent point. It is something we should consider. It's probably a moot point, based on what Ms. Smith just said, hopefully.
Mrs. Vogel?
I have one question, and I noticed after the last calendar. Veterans Day is observed on the 13th, which is a Monday, but for a lot of other organizations, it's observed on the 10th, which is a Friday, which is the closest to the actual day. Do you know why that is?
I believe we observe the state holiday. Yeah.
The issue I have with RIDE's reinterpretation of the rules is that we've worked very hard at making our early release Wednesdays valuable. And I know the elementary school teachers fought for many years to get that early release day because it was only at the middle and high level. We finally got it to elementary school. It seems to really be paying off with, when you look at our status among other districts. And I, I really don't believe this is some place that RIDE should be really dictating how we should handle this when we are already in compliance with the law. So, I will not be supporting this.
Ms. Smith?
So, Mr. Fiorello, I, I understand what you're saying, but at this point, without us going, and maybe that's what we have to look at, is to go forward and talk to RIDE and maybe see about changes so that this doesn't occur in the future. But I'm not sure how not supporting this when we have no choice but to meet the RIDE requirement. We had already approved our calendar, and I'm certainly disappointed, like everyone else, that they're taking this away. But it's, it's not a choice for us this year. We have no choice but to follow it.
Well, I agree with what you're saying. However, we are in compliance with the law. RIDE has decided to change their interpretation of the same law. The law hasn't changed. Their view of the law has changed, and I, that's where I have a problem, so.
It certainly puts us in an undesirable position because it is July 13th, and school is starting soon. I, I mean, I mean, like Ms. Smith said, I think we all are not happy about this. There are many things our district has done that we've taken very specific steps to help improve student achievement, and it shows in our RIDEcast scores and all of our scores year after year after year. That common planning time that we've done on our early release days and the other professional development opportunities have made a difference in our district. And I agree with Mr. Fiorello. I don't know, Mr. Adams, what recourse we have.
So, I don't think, I think, given the pace of my work, probably little before this year. But I think it is, as I think I've kind of said, it does strike me as a lawyer that the spirit of the statute that is in question is to give school departments flexibility in meeting the hours requirement for their students. And it does also appear to me that the RIDE edict is arguably inconsistent with that as opposed to simply implementing it. But that's an argument that could be lost and could be time-consuming and expensive. And I don't think there's any way for us to get around it for the fall of 2023. Is that the year we're in? Yes, fall of 2023. But I don't have any quarrel with having conversations with the Rhode Island Department of Education at any level, whether it's me, the superintendent, member of the committee, all of the above. I think that might be fruitful. Those have not proven particularly fruitful with the Rhode Island Superintendent's Association, per my discussions with Dr. Thornton, which is baffling to me, but it is not the first time I have been baffled by our friends at the Rhode Island Department of Education.
Mrs. Rogowski, thank you, Mr. Adams.
Oh, Mrs. Vogel, I mean. Just for clarification, I know we're allowed three snow days in which we don't need to make up at the end of the year. Why couldn't we back up the end date by three days? And then if we do have the snow days, we'll tack them on. But if we don't, at least we're three days prior? Because right now, you went from the 17, not you, but the calendar went from the 17th to the 18th. Adding on a, it looks like it adds on a day even though there's two less days. But if we're allowed these three days, why can't we make our end date that day?
I'm not sure how to wrap my head around that, but I know we.
Like a RIDEcast math question.
Interesting idea. I just, I'm not sure. Have to think about that.
May I? Ms. Smith? So, if I remember correctly, in reading the letter from RIDE, and it says that because we have the instructional minutes, that we could forgive and shorten the school year by three days should that happen and not have to do the school, which would bring it to 177 days. But in this case, our students are at 178 days already because we have to read the other RIDE requirement. So, I'm not sure how the numbers can even balance.
If you were to have three snow days, it'd be as low as 175 when you're done.
Right. And will that have to get another approval? Because RIDE was very clear at the 177 in their letter to us.
In this interpretation, in our, our iteration, I believe, if it snowed and we declared three snow days, it would be an approvable 175-day school year, getting out on still the 18th, though. What she's proposing is to.
And then add in the days like we normally would have added the days in if there was a snow day. This current one has snow days added in essentially because they're giving us three snow days.
I, I don't think we're allowed to, in advance, do that.
Is there something that says we're not allowed to?
I'd have heard our legal counsel on that.
I don't have an opinion on that one. I'd have to look at it. I honestly, I understand the concept.
Well, I think generally, the important thing is that we give parents as much advance notice about days that their children will not be in school so that they can plan ahead for it. And we have the next item on the agenda as well, which is the early release day that parents also will need to plan for. We could, we could, if someone wanted to, make a motion to vote on this as-is. It doesn't mean we couldn't come back if we get an opinion about the end and vote again at a, because that will not, that doesn't impact. Right, exactly. Right. So, we may have some more time to figure that piece out.
That is a good point. The start of the school is not really in question here, I don't think.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Collins?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the school calendar with the caveat, what you just mentioned, that there is an opportunity here to pursue changes to the end. Because to your point, you know, we can't, this was kind of thrown at us, we had discussions, so it, you know, six, seven weeks away from the start of school. We drag it out till our next meeting, August 10th, and parents have childcare. And fortunately, a lot of those days off are in 2024, so parents have plenty of time. It's not like, but we, we have to get the school year started with some sort of calendar. But, you know, and it'll, it'll affect the backend, to Ms. Vogel's point. Yeah, like shave off, you know, proactively take away the three days. I think that's a great idea. Legally, I don't know if it works, but in theory, Ms. Vogel, I love it. So, anyway, I'll make that motion to approve the changes to the calendar with my, holding my nose at the same time, so.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogowski. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
It passes six to one. Thank you. And we will, we are asking Mr. Adams, Dr. Thornton, to look into the question that Mrs. Vogel asked. Okay, next item on the agenda. Discussion and Revote to Approve Revised 2023-2024 School Start End Time Schedule, which eliminates the early release day from the schedule. We did just discuss this a little bit, but Dr. Thornton, any more to add to that?
No, nothing more to add on that one. It was, it was pretty clear that we are not allowed to do the early release, so this is the same bell schedule every day. Just the only caveat right now, we still need some time for the preschool to get the final times to you.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the, the change in the start end times. As unfortunate as it is, it is a RIDE requirement, so I will make the motion to approve.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Nay.
It passes six to one. Next item on the agenda. Discussion and Revote to Approve Recoding of District Policies. Mr. Fiorello, Fiorello, I'll let you begin this.
Thank you. So, as I discussed earlier, this is just recoding of policies. None of these policies have been changed. What we will be doing is I-1 will become H-1, district wellness policy. J-14 becomes H-2, the food allergy policy. A-4 becomes the H-3, smoke and tobacco-free schools policy. F-1 becomes H-4, protective face coverings. G-16 becomes H-5, service animals in school. J-24 also becomes H-5. J-27 becomes the H-7, head lice policy. Did I piss? Oh, I'm sorry. J-27 becomes H-6, the suicide prevention policy. J-10 becomes H-8, immunization requirements. J-12 becomes H-9, dispensing of medication. J-22 becomes H-10, the administration of Narcan. J-11 becomes H-11, and G-4 also becomes H-11, the bloodborne disease, universal precautions. J-26 becomes H-12, the control of communicable disease. J-23 becomes A-7, actually, policy affecting students who identify as transgender or gender nonconforming. That policy has been changed, and we'll be voting on that change later on, but the reclassification will take place anyways. So, I would make a motion to make those changes.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve the recoding of these district policies, item 1 through 15. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? It passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda. Discussion and Revote to Approve Amended Policies. Mr. Fiorello.
So, first is the J-23, well, now A-7, policy affecting students who identify as transgender or gender nonconforming. Once we pass the policy, that policy will actually change its title to Students Who Identify as Transgender or Non-Binary. And as you can see in this policy, a lot of the definitions have changed as things change over the years. There's a lot more details on what all of these terms actually mean. The biggest change, really, is the physical education classes and intramural and interscholastic athletics. That is based, the Rhode Island Interscholastic League has tweaked some of their rules, and we are making changes so that we are in compliance with their policies. That is pretty much the only change that has taken place. I am very happy to say that we've had this policy. We were the first in Rhode Island to pass this policy, and in the years that we've had it, we have never had any disruptions or really any problems at any level. So, I would make a motion to make, to approve the changes.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve. Second by Mr. Collins. And I would, I would just add to this, that this year, at high school graduation, was the first year that we had non-gender-defining robes. And everybody, it looked wonderful to see, to see it blew out there. So, it was nice to see that change finally made. And I, we're also making that change at the high school year, the seniors, their photos. They also are not required to wear the gender-specific drape and tuxedo that they have had to do in the past. So, we, we've caught up in some of those areas as well. So, that was nice to see. So, we have a motion by Mr. Fiorello, a second by Mr. Collins. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes seven to zero. And next, Mr. Fiorello?
Next is the amendment, the heavily amended I-5 preschool policy and guidelines. This is something I am going to ask Dr. Santa to come up to the microphone and explain in detail. This was a long time coming, quite honestly, and I thank Dr. Santa for making sure this got done before she leaves us.
So, the original policy just had about funding, and it was just a little piece. And there's several things that were missing from the policy, in my opinion, that included how did we do our lottery, making sure that we were being really transparent, how everything is done. We put in there being, if you are a Cumberland school employee, that your child could be in our preschool if you're also a Cumberland resident. The fact that we do try occasionally, we keep, we keep a couple spots back from the lottery of students that have come to our evaluation team who have not been found eligible, but we are concerned about them and want to see a little bit closer look. So, that's being very forthcoming. Talks about how we do the lottery using a random number generator. I was a little surprised to find in the past that we did not have a free and reduced policy. So, we put in there to, if you're on reduced lunch, that you have a 50% discount on your preschool, and if you're free, you're free. They still have to apply to the lottery, but if they're chosen from the lottery, then they have those accommodations.
And, and that is really just for the peer students?
Just peer students, right. Our students with special needs do not pay tuition. We also do not prevent students who typically would just have a walk-in, a related service like speech OT or PT. They can still apply to the lottery, but if they're receiving special ed service, we reduce their tuition. Just because you have related service doesn't mean you get full-time preschool. It's really based on what services you need, but we still allow them to be part of it and then discount them by an hourly rate. I think those are the major pieces to it, and just really the process of how we do the lottery and just being, I, we want to be really abundantly transparent. There was also some confusion in the past where people would call, I remember one case where they're calling and yelling about, they've been on the waitlist for two years. We don't keep a waitlist. It's for the year, and then we redo it in, in March again. We don't keep something from year to year to year. So, we clarified that.
Yeah, and it's important, it's important to note that we have a preschool program really for the special education students that need this program, and we allow peers to come in because it's good for the overall classroom structure.
It's good for both populations of students, right. But we wouldn't have a preschool if we didn't have students with special needs. It is not a public preschool, so.
Yeah.
And sometimes that's a little confusing for folks.
Yeah, and this is the start of, I think, some really exciting, innovative innovations that are happening with our preschool. We have a new curriculum, and I'm really looking forward to what the preschool is going to look like in another year or two. So, thank you, Dr. Santa.
You're welcome.
And also, thank you, Nellie Norman, who's done the work for the last few years and is leaving us for bigger opportunities.
Wish her well.
So I would make a motion to approve I-5, the preschool policy and guidelines.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve I-5. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Rogowski. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes, seven to zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve the first reading of new policy. Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, this is H-13, the administration of medical marijuana. As a new policy, it requires two readings before a final vote. I'm sorry?
But we'll vote.
I think we vote on the reading itself, just to kind of give it a little, yeah, we, we, we read, yeah, we just vote to, just to vote, quite honestly. So the medical marijuana poli, our medical marijuana policy is required by state law that we have it. This is why we have a policy. This also does help a certain population of students. Without going into a lot of detail, I don't know if Dr. Santa wants to go into detail on the different reasons why some students would need medical marijuana, but it's something that families have been fighting for, for years, where the medical marijuana is actually much better for them than very harsh medicine that these students would be taking. Yes, basically, students with seizure disorders. This is a huge help to those families. One of the most important parts of this is that our nurses are not required to do this. We will provide a space for them to go. And I let Dr. Santa explain this, and then I'm just going to rant and rave for a few moments on another issue about this policy.
So, I know what that's going to be. So under general law, it says that school nurses may just, you know, dispense, under the Rhode Island Department of Health regulations, it also states that, but it also states that no nurse can be forced to dispense medical marijuana, and as long as they're doing it equally. So if they're, if it's saying no to one kid, it's no to everybody. Because we, our nurses are very concerned that this is not under federal regulation, that they're concerned about their licensure, they have many, many concerns about this. And if we have one nurse in the district unwilling to dispense, then to me, then it's, the whole district can't dispense, because it would be, to me, also unevenly and unequal. So that is why many districts, it seems to me, when I was looking to see who passed, they just took the RIDO regulation and made it into policy, saying they kind of had to do it. But I'm not sure if they really read it thoroughly regarding that nurse disclosure. So what we did is we just stated that we would not, we can't require it this particular time until there's a legal reason to do so, and then legally required to do so, I'm sorry. And then, but we did put in a procedure and policy regarding if a parent, parents designate or a guardian wishes to dispense that to their person, they have an ability to do that. And there's a lot of rules regarding that, and that comes directly from the RIDO regulations. So we just sort of took those and put it in. And we were super clear that a parent's designate could not be the student themselves. Well, when you work with, I've worked with a lot of students with behavioral issues, so I always have to think about how a rule can be manipulated. And I'm thinking, we might want to just put that in, just to be clear.
And the policy is also very clear, is no, no smoking.
No smoking. It's, it can only be edibles or tinctures. And that's really it. It cannot be anything smokable.
Yeah, this is not going to allow students to, you know, be sparking up in the hallways as some would, you know, be concerned about, so.
Or dabbing.
Yeah, exactly. So nothing has really changed.
That our enrollment was going up now. So, just a little joke, sorry.
It just really outlines what you have to do if you wanted to be a parent who comes to the, the district to do that.
Yeah, I don't really feel that this is going to have a large impact on our day-to-day.
No, I don't think so.
Thank you, Dr. Santa. Also, now, my little moment is, I, I had written, and if you notice, the original version of this policy was renamed in sections to cannabis. The reasoning is because many states are actually moving away from calling it medical marijuana and are changing it back to cannabis. Cannabis is the actual technical term, the scientific term. It is actually, marijuana was used as a dog whistle around the turn of the 19, from around 1900, when the country was experiencing a large Mexican influx of immigrants. Some people, I'm sorry? Yes. However, they started vilifying the Mexicans by claiming they were bringing dangerous drugs, marijuana, into the country, whereas it had always been called cannabis up until that point, and it lasted for many years, and it led eventually to the illegal, the, what's the word I'm looking for?
Volstead Act?
Yes, the Volstead Act, as others, not the Volstead Act, but just making marijuana illegal in this country, which it had never been, and it also affected many other industries. But saying that, we are required to follow the actual state law and call it medical marijuana, I would ask the state legislature to join other states in actually correcting this issue, because this really is an unfair slander against a group of people. Thank you. I'm sorry, I do make a motion to approve this.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve the first reading of the new policy, H-13. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes, seven to zero. Next on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve resolutions. Mr. Collins.
That's right. Resolution time. So we have 11 resolutions this evening, SEPI-07, dash 2023, dash 84 through 94. I do have, before I have to pull things out, all the resolutions pass Fiscal Management Subcommittee 3 to 0. But before we move through with the totality of the resolutions, I want to turn your attention to number five on the agenda, Resolution 88. There is an amendment, let me just pull up my notes.
It's a fiscal note.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I read it properly. So there was an issue, wrong note, there was an issue with the fiscal note and, like clockwork, I don't, I don't-
Do you want me to do it?
No, I want to make sure I read it correctly, so it's consistent with fiscal. Yeah, there was a budget funding thing in there. Let me just, I, I closed my, my minutes from standby. So the amendment that we, we, we did was as this. So we have to make an amendment to indicate the funding source. The original, the resolution, the way it's written, has it down as general budget, so we have to, I would move passage of an amendment to change the funding source to Title II. It's Title II funding, there was an error on the resolution that was presented to the committee in the drive. So I made a motion to amend the resolution, indicate the, the correct funding source as Title II funding.
Okay, so Mr. Collins makes a motion to amend SEPR-07, 2023, dash 88, to indicate the funding source as Title II. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes, seven to zero. So now we have an amended 07, 2023, dash 88.
So with that, I would have, I would ask, I would move passage of the 11 resolutions to the full committee, all of which pass Fiscal Management Subcommittee 3 to 0.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve resolutions, SEPR-07, 2023, dash 84 through 94, including amended 88. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogowski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes, seven to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Collins, discussion and/or vote to approve payment of bills.
Payment of bills. So what was presented to the Fiscal Management Subcommittee and to the full committee was payment of the bills in the amount of $2,68,150.31. I don't think we have to amend this, but Fiscal Management Subcommittee, there is a potential double payment to RIDE in the amount of 52,035.55, $55.51. So we, I would ask payment of the bills in the amount of $2,015,794.80. Yes, I did the math twice, as I was taught in middle school. So payment of the bills, the amended payment of the bills passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee 3 to 0, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve payment of bills. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Vogel. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes, seven to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, next, School Committee comments, School Liaison, Liaison reports. Any comments from the School Committee?
I do have one.
Mr. Collins.
I do believe 15th is officially your last day, Dr. Santa's, so what's your last day? Is it the end of the month?
July 31st.
July 31st. So I knew, I knew, but I knew this was the last time we were going to see each other in open session, so I'm reminded of how, how much you've committed to the district, time and effort and energy, your passion for, not just special education, but, but your, your staunch advocacy of students, your staff. So thank you very much for what you've done. I know you're moving on to greener pastures, or not. I mean, anyway, we, we are going to miss you. Obviously, we have a new specialized, Di Stefani?
Di Stefani.
Di Stefani, I want to make sure I pronounce it. So welcome, you're already in-house. So congratulations on your promotion, it's well-deserved, and thank you, Dr. Santa, for all you've done for this district, and to the committee with your, just even tonight, that thorough description of what we're passing and just really helping us understand, because you, your, what you, the work you do is so important. So thank you very much. Our loss is your new district's gain.
Mr. Fiorello.
I too would like to comment on Dr. Santa's tenure here. Once again, I have to bring up the first time I met Dr. Santa. Yeah, I went in to meet with her because, having a child in special education, I was very involved with special education, the advisory parent group, everything. So I wanted to meet with her and just introduce myself, and I was waiting for her because she was on a telephone call, and I heard her yelling into the phone at Ride or DCYF? DCYF, and the words I heard were, "It's about the kids, damn it." That's what I heard. That was the tone of your voice. And that's when I realized, this is the person that we need in this position. And she has really transformed special education in Cumberland by creating the coordinator model, really just, really more hands-on with all the kids, bringing in more specialists. The, the support that all the kids have gotten has really increased over the years under Dr. Santa's tenure. So I just want to say thank you for everything. I've really enjoyed working with you over the past several years, and thank you for leaving the department in such good hands with Alicia. Alicia? Because I keep saying it wrong, because it's, you know, just my speech problem. And quite honestly, Alicia's been here for so long that if she was to leave today, she'd get a, you know, a speech back. So if anyone knows this, this district, Alicia does. So thank you, Dr. Santa, congratulations, Alicia. I look forward to working with you, and Rachel, really, thank you for everything.
Aw, thank you. Any other comments from the School Committee? And lovely words from Mr. Collins and Mr. Fiorello, and of course, I know on behalf of everyone in the School Committee, we are all thankful for your service, and we wish you the best of luck. We're sad to see you go. We're excited to welcome someone new, and we have some, a lot of new people coming in now, which is exciting. And you've helped us, you've also helped us fiscally, you know, moving to more of an in-source model versus an outsource model, and lots of things that have helped advance us in the district. So thank you very much. Okay, so next, vote to go into executive session, I don't believe.
We do not.
So I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Rogowski?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?